Good morning. Welcome to the Monday, May the 5th, 2014 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. If you would please take a moment and put your phones on silent mode, please. And if you would, join me for the invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and your blessings. We pray that you will be with those that so badly injured by this bad weather, the tornadoes, the floods. I pray that what we say and do here will be civil and be pleasing in your sight. We ask these things in Jesus' name and for his sake. Amen. Commissioner Salter, will you lead us in the pledge?
Public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll give them my right. Commissioner Salter, do you have any additions?
No additions, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole?
No additions.
Commissioner Leachard?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Ms. Jones?
Play lock.
Okay. Item number one on the agenda is Economic Development Committee Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're honored this morning to have with us the President of Pensacola State College, Mr. Ed Meadows. He's going to talk with us about a request from Pensacola State College for funding for a STEM facility at the Pensacola campus. Welcome.
That good. Mr. Chair and other members of the commission, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. On the Pensacola campus, we've got a 58-year-old building that is a STEM facility that has been on the capital outlay approved list at the state now for six years. It's been our number one priority for five years for its replacement. With aerospace, ST aerospace coming into northwest Florida and also with the eventual arrival of suppliers from Airbus, we are planning to design one story or a wing of that building to accommodate A&amp;P training for the aerospace industry, and that is the airframe and aircraft mechanics program. In this building, there's also our math, our cybersecurity, and our applied engineering degree programs that would move into the new facility. This facility, a gustality study was done five years ago, and the verdict there was to tear it down. This past year, our chancellor asked us to do a reassessment of our number one priorities, so we hired an architectural firm and two engineering firms. They went back in and found the same thing, except even worse deterioration of that building. Our local legislative delegation has worked very, very hard and secured a million dollars for planning of the replacement of that building. So it is in the capital outlay budget, the PICO budget. The governor has stipulated for STEM projects. If there is a match at the local level, then it wouldn't be vetoed at the governor's level. That's where it is now. It's on the governor's desk, and he's trying to decide which projects to let go through and which ones to eliminate. About half of the projects that are the Florida College System projects are not STEM facilities, so it's going to be interesting to see what he does with those. And the other half are STEM. At this particular place in time, we can only do what one year at a time allows us to do, and there's no indication that he is going to require a match for the entire project. This is a $26 million project. It would be a two-story classroom building for the cybersecurity, applied technology, traditional kinds of Klinglab work, and then the aerospace facility would have to have a different infrastructure to be able to lift the engines and so forth. So it would be a wing off of that building to replace the five-finger building that's between the administration building and behind the library. We have sought assistance from the city of Pensacola, and they've agreed to provide $25,000. I have a letter from them. Escambia County delayed their decision wanting an exact amount of money and a request that I ask all possible, you know, the two county college service area to participate in this match. And they specifically cited the Santa Rosa County Commission for me to make a request to you, and I have made a request of $100,000. I realize you don't have a local optional sales tax as they do. I've got a letter from their county administrator saying that they are excited about the opportunity to have ST Aerospace and Pensacola State to provide a training facility that's going to provide about initially 300 employees, and then they're thinking 50 to 60 new employees per year. And those would come from, of course, some of those would be coming to be trained from Santa Rosa County. So they're looking for people to partner with this initiative so that they can come up with an exact amount of money. I have written a letter to the governor telling him that we have received favorable responses from our local government agencies, but that I don't have a set figure as to how much match that they will all provide. But the Escambia County has written a letter that said they would provide up to a million dollars, and they want to not have to do a million dollars. They want participation from all the different entities. The allocation we got from the House and the Senate is a million dollars, so we're looking for a million-dollar match, which would be $2 million for the planning of the replacement of this building. Initially, we had requested 2.6 million from the legislature, and so we got a million, and we're looking for the match. So that's my request to the Santa Rosa County Commission is to request that you consider providing a match of $100,000. If you can do that, I would need a letter of commitment in May, before the end of May, and hopefully, you know, as we move forward. I know the governor's staff is evaluating the PICO projects, well, actually started evaluating the PICO project this past weekend.
Dr. Meadows, thank you for, first of all, thank you for what you do in running a great college that serves a, truly serves a region. So any comments or questions from the board? Chairman Hill?
Yes, sir. Have the various school boards or can the various school boards participate in this? I don't know how stovepipe their funds are.
Escambia County Commissioner may ask that question. Our participation with the local school systems is programmatic. In other words, we'll have articulation agreements. The legislation has passed for the collegiate high schools where we are mandated and will be penalized if we do not create a collegiate high school, and that is going to be a vocational technical certification program in the different areas. And so we'll be working programmatically with your school, county school system, to develop a collegiate high school that will allow high school students to receive certifications and associate degrees while they're still in high school in these technical areas. In terms of brick and mortar, if you remember, the South Santa Rosa Center, the funding for that center was assisted by a signed agreement between Pensacola State College and the Santa Rosa School District, a partner in dual enrollment. But in terms of funding from the secondary school system, they, the state looks at the construction money for secondary school systems and the faller college system as two separate pots of money. So we, so right now, I don't think we'd be able to co-mingle money in the way that would be desirable in many cases to come up with a joint program. Now, your superintendent and I have talked about a joint facility in the future, but we didn't talk about how that would be funded. If a joint facility could be secured, we would certainly explore that. If we can get past this legislative session with the planning money intact, that will give us a year to explore other options in terms of the feasibility of some other type of financial arrangement with the secondary school systems. But since this facility is going to be built in Escambia County, it would have to be a partnership with the Escambia County School System. I wish I could give you a better answer on that, other than say, I know from past experience, the South Santa Rosa Center was, the entire allocation came to the, to Pensacola State, and no portion of that came through the secondary school system.
Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Meadows, a couple of things that may or may not work. I know the cyber tech course would take a facility of its own, and as you said, the AP licensing program would require more like a hangar-type facility. Have you thought any about if the ST contract gets finalized with the close proximity of the state college and the airport and that new facility, could we maybe add on to that new hangar facility and put a, put a classroom basically within that?
There is a possibility that we can do some training there, particularly for internships. Part of the problem that we have with, again, is, you know, who would pay for that wing? It is still going to cost money, and
Sure.
The continuation of training for pre-employment people that are going to apply for positions would best be handled on college property.
Okay.
I think there's, and I had experience with this in Alabama, where we had an aviation, we had governmental contracts at our airport in Covenant County. As a matter of fact, Niceville lost an aerospace agency to Covenant County. Unbelievable that, you know, Florida would lose a major contract company to a rural area, but we, we had an incubator there at the airport that was owned by the county, and we were able to bring the Alabama Aviation College there for a dual enrollment program, but we had to keep it separate from the actual manufacturing facility. So there are a lot of things that we can explore. I think the main thing that we're trying to do now is make sure we don't lose our planning money.
Sure.
And we will be exploring the possibility of an instructional site at the airport, but for the day-to-day training of, for students that wish to become employed, we feel like that it would be better to have it physically located on our campus.
And I thought, you know, perhaps the, you know, the bookwork type could be on campus, but perhaps the heavy lifting part could be, you know, that could be designed into this facility as we move forward. Just, just food for thought there on, on that type of thing. And then I know, like, Lachlan or George Stone gets a buy-in from General Motors and Ford for some student aid and stuff like that. Do you think there'd be a buy-in on this program from the airlines?
Definitely. We have a letter of support from ST Aerospace, and it's obvious that most companies like this actually donate the, some of the equipment that they are using to the colleges to do the training. And again, it's been an experience that most colleges would prefer the donated equipment be physically located on the campus because we, I don't know, I don't think we would call it territorism, but there are some issues with operating a, another distant site that we wouldn't have if we had it on our college property.
Thank you.
Mr. Leachard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Meadows, I appreciate you bringing this to us this morning, and appreciate everything that you've done out at Pensacola State College. Since you're, during your tenure, they've grown in campuses and offerings and stature, so I appreciate everything you're doing out there. A lot of exciting things going on. I support this. I think the STEM facilities are vital, and they're going to continue to be more so as our economy changes and the need for that specialized education continues to grow. So I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Dr. Meadows, as you probably know, our economic development funds comes from a portion of our franchise fee.
Yes, sir.
And with approval of the board, what I'll do after the meeting today, I'll get with Mr. Walker and see what's available in that fund. I know some of it's been obligated for future training and future projects, but we'd be more than happy to evaluate your request. And between now and Thursday, coming back on Thursday, we'll be able to make a decision.
I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I would move this to Thursday's agenda without objection.
Here, note of passes.
Thank you, Dr. Meadows.
Appreciate it. I also want to thank the county commission for helping us with our new entryway. We, we had a mess on our hands for a great while, but working with DOT and also the influence of the county commission, you know, stressing to them that we needed a safe intersection. I think we've got a good start there, and we have a new sign going up. We did feel the need for the second entryway, so we have the second entryway there. And so for the calls that I made to some of you to call DOT, I appreciate that very much. It had a positive impact on the outcome. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is the Administrative Committee, and we have nine items this morning. Item number one is a presentation on the Blackwater Maritime Heritage Blue Ways Trail Project by the Baghdad Waterfront Partnership. Welcome.
Thank you.
Turn the light on, please, and then give us your name and address for the record. Punch the button, and the light will come on. Be your right-hand button. There you go.
There we go. My name is Doug Lassiter, and I have Richard Lewis with me this morning here. We are both from the Baghdad area, and we're here to talk to you about a project that we're working on. We're not here to ask for money, so you can take a deep breath and relax about that for a moment. But what we do want to talk about is a Baghdad, or actually a Blackwater Maritime Heritage Trail. We have a short PowerPoint presentation, and this is the first slide. And this is, again, a project sponsored by the Baghdad Waterfronts, and this will be in conjunction with our trail project, but this is actually the first phase of this particular project. And the objective of this trail is to talk to the people outside this community about the assets we have under the water and on the water versus traditional land trails. Now, we are working closely with University of West Florida. Next slide, please. And we have a young man who's doing his master's thesis on this, Ben Wells, and Dr. Irtan is also assisting in this. And the trail itself, next slide, please. One more slide, please. There we go. It's a trail that starts essentially at the I-10 Bridge and will go up towards Carpenter Park. We've selected this particular portion of the river for this project so that we can zero in on the primary location where most of the underwater wrecks and things are at. Next slide, please. One more slide. We need to get to the map. Oh, that's good enough now. So let's take one more slide. There's the map. Okay. This shows the actual trail location, and again, I would emphasize this is just the first phase of this project. The trail itself is a virtual trail. So in other words, if you come to this community and you wanted to take the Blue Way Trail, you could use an iPad or an iPhone, or you could do it with a laptop. You go to a website. This trail will include things such as surface features, where you can launch and retrieve your boats, your kayaks, those types of things. It'll have underwater features. We're not going to specifically tell people where these underwater structures are located, but you will be able to take a virtual tour of them. We will have, we're doing underwater photography, UWF is. So for example, the Tampa. On this trail, on your boat, you can take a general description of where the Tampa's located, not specific, and then click on it, and it will show you a virtual tour of the boat underwater photography. It gives you a history of the boat, how it got there, and where it come from. That's just one aspect of the trail. The website also will include events. We want this to be an economic driver as well as a historical driver, as well as a tourism driver. So as we develop the website, and this is where we're probably going to need your assistance more than anything, as we develop that website, you will be able to go into the website through a group and say, we're going to have a big opening event at the Millsite Park, for example. You can click on this trail site, and you can go to the Millsite, and we'll show the events that are going to happen there in the grand opening, things like that. So it has multiple facets, what we're going to try to get across with the trail. Let's back up one slide, please. So we're here today to talk to you about supporting us morally, and we're obviously going to probably use your cartography division occasionally to help with some base maps. But these are some of the organizations that have supported us and are part of our group. And you can see the Waterfronts up on the left, the Blackwater Pirates, their mission statement's very similar to the Baghdad Waterfront's mission statement in terms of access to the water and preservation, and historical preservation. UWF, of course, City of Milton has been very supportive, Blackwater Heritage State Trail, and of course, the Public Archaeological Network. We also have made a presentation to the TDC. Jim, you heard that presentation, and they're very in favor of this as being a sponsoring organization as well. So let's go two more slides. So our overall goal is to conduct, conduct this, organize, I should say, the Waterfronts group, organize these groups, and with UWF to put together this trail and hopefully have this completed about the same time that we are looking to open the park, depending on another rain or two. But we're thinking spring of 2015, so we should have it done then. Last slide, please. Again, this shows some of the areas of interest that we're working on with the trail. This will be a historical document in many senses, and one of the things that we're trying to accomplish with this as well is we're doing an on-the-water assessment with some of the locals, the folks that have lived there for a long time, for example, Richard, to actually give us the correct names of some of these locations so that in the process, when you refer to somewhere on the trail now, rather than the Shellpile Landing, which is really a misnomer for the boat launch ramp in Baghdad, for example, that's the Tampa Landing, always has been. We're going to try to create a strong sense of the original names, get that back ingrained in people's vocabulary. The public facilities that we have now, we're going to highlight those. We're also going to look at the businesses that are located on or near the water, and they may be able to sponsor some things. We don't know, but we want to make sure that people coming here know that there are businesses they can access from this trail as well. Last slide. Oh, that is, okay. There we go. This is, to give you an idea about the underwater side of this, they have discovered a 110-foot double paddle wheel steamer that was unknown to us until we started this, and it's relatively intact in 20-foot of water. Now, they have found out with a brick out of the boiler where the boat was made, and they'll have the history of it, and they'll tell why it ended up there, where it came from. So that's just one aspect. So not only are we documenting what's there, they are discovering new things. And what you see up here is a side-scanned sonar of the Tampa as it lays now on the bottom of the entrance to the Yellow River. So you'll have the virtual underwater tour. We'll probably have a side-scanned sonar for those that are more into that technical side to see what these ships look like. And again, we're not going to tell people where they're at. Really don't want people going here and salvaging this stuff. And we're trying to educate them to leave it there and also use this as a teaching tool. Next slide, please. So that's in essence what we're asking for. Next slide. Awareness of the project. We want to share this information we have with all the agencies. We want to look at this as a group event. Again, the Waterfronts is sponsoring and spearheading it, organizing it, but we want to include everyone in this because I think everyone has a viable part of this. And as we proceed, we're going to ask people in your staff to look at it and say, are we eliminating something? Have we forgotten something? Again, we don't really need any money right now. The Waterfronts, we have a very limited budget, but we've committed $1,200 to Ben Wells to pay for his travel expenses for research at Tallahassee, his gasoline, things like that. We are going to buy him an underwater camera so that we don't have to wait to borrow the one from UWF. So some minor expenses now. We don't really see a lot of expenses in this, other than on the technical side developing the website. That'll be a bit challenging for us, and that's, the county can probably, you have people that could probably help us with that. Last slide. Okay, that's it. So really, what we're asking is that support from you. And then Richard has a brief update on the Millsite itself.
Thank you, Doug. First of all, we'd like to thank the commission for its support on our development of the Baghdad Millsite Park, which is a central feature of this Blackwater Trail. It will be, if anything, the gem of the whole operation, and will give an opportunity for people to not only come ashore, but enjoy all the rather splendid features of the park. I especially want to thank Commissioner Cole for his support. He's done everything from the beginning, including get out with a tractor and help us plant trees. So we really appreciate that, Bob. The recent flooding rains have stopped progress on the park, as you can well imagine, as the county has to tend to other issues, more pressing issues, but we hope to return to that in a short while. And we will be, after the site preparation is finished, we'll be installing the physical trail, extension of the Blackwater Trail into the park, and doing the other things that we finally hope to do, the fishing and doing the other things that we finally hope to do, the fishing pier, the kayak launch, the dog park, the picnic areas, all of those things in due course. All of this will take time, but we're hoping that we'll be able to accomplish this within the year, and we're planning a gala opening of the park, and we want to, here and now, invite you. We don't have an opportunity to have you reserve your calendar yet, but we will as soon as we're able. Ask you to reserve a time on your calendar. We'd like very much for all of the commissioners to be in attendance for our celebration. Thank you again for your help on this, and we very much appreciate your help on the Heritage Trail, and we hope that we will be realizing that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. This is a great project, and there's a lot of hard work's gone into it. Commissioner Cole kind of spearheaded it from the start. Really look forward to seeing this come to fruition. I followed Warren Weeks around all of my life, and he was a great local historian. He was my mother's baby brother, and we went over and over and over a lot of these things. So it's just fun to see it really come into surface now. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item is, item number two is discussion of acquisition of conservation easement on a 112.32-acre parcel, which is owned by East Gate LLC adjacent to the NAS Whiting Field utilizing Florida Defense Infrastructure Grant and U.S. Navy Readiness Environmental Protection Integration (REPI) funds. Commissioner Salter, do you have anything there? I was going to call him.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest Ms. Jones and Mr. Roy, since it's coming from the Navy as well.
Who do you want to start?
Good morning.
Good morning. Randy Roy from NAS Whiting Field. I think today's discussion is about 112 acres. East Gate LLC is located right out the back gate. It's a piece of property that we actually own a drainage ditch across, basically dissects the property in a kind of a wedge. Actually, as you can see it on the map there, outlined in red on the right side, on the east side. And actually, this is just north of the Aviation Park and is co-located to some of the property that was executed with the state underneath the REPI and the state of PP agreement that we have called SSA Development Property. It's a piece of property, it was looking at the priority list as about 290 parcels, you guys know, around Whiting Field proper, and the 290 parcels are basically within a half-mile buffer of the base. And looking at the map, this is the number-three priority parcel that's been identified since the joint land use study. It offers a large conservation value, if you will, off the right-hand side. It's encumbered, it doesn't show it on this map particularly well, but portions of the property are basically covered by accident potential zones, noise contours, and the whole property actually lies within the military airport influence area. The property is actually zoned M2, and I think there's some discussion that might have come up in the past about this property about a couple of years ago. I'm not, I don't have the actual date in my head, but this property was rezoned to an industrial to complement the Aviation Park. And one of the reasons it was done that way, when I was at the zoning board that night, was the discussion on why this property with the Navy would approve an M2 on the property. And the M2 is specifically spelt out that night to us, the Navy, is because of the word aviation. If you do M1 or some of the other complimentary zoning, I'm just giving you some history. It was an M2 that actually allowed the property owner to do what they were intending to do, was to complement the Aviation Park. I guess the property owner's desires have changed since then, and that they, at that time, they actually, prior to that, they had asked us if we would participate in the program with them. But we had several other properties that were already in the fire at that time, both with the county and the state, and what basically was going to stretch us, and we couldn't make it. So when the property was presented to us, we presented it to the staff, talked to the skipper about it. Does offer a lot of value to us as far as protecting not only future growth of Whiting Field. If you look at, you never know what the future may hold at Whiting Field, but you know how parallel runways in the future. But it allows us an opportunity to participate in the REPI program. And the REPI program is Readiness Environmental Protection Integration Program, and basically allows us to work and partner with entities through Title X to address incompatible development strategies. Again, this is a piece of property that sits on the fence line, offers us some force protection and initiative protections as well because it immediately abuts our installation. And it is encumbered quite a bit by our military airport influence area. It covers the whole thing, but the zone's about, I think, 75% as mentioned. But I know I got really belabor there and it's giving a little bit more history, but I understand that there might have been some discussions on, particularly when we've been doing some of the REPI projects, been addressing ag land or ag-type sources. It's just fortunate that Whiting Field actually lies within an area and has a half-mile buffer around it that actually has a lot of the property already zoned ag. So it actually gives us a lot of value for return on investment as far as just protecting the asset. But I'm here to answer any other questions you might have.
Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Randy here again. You said this is the number three?
Number three, sir. Yes, sir.
And we use the term highest-rated piece of property around Whiting to help buffer the base. Is it APZ-1 or APZ-2?
It is encumbered by some of the APZ-2. Actually, I got a map here. APZ-1 is on the northwest section of the property. If you were to look at that property, we see the green, dark green piece of parcel. It's about an 80-acre parcel that comes down and it butts just north. If you were to draw a line straight down, that's about where your APZ-1 comes over the property. The gentleman would actually be limited quite a bit of what he could do in the property, even if it was zoned M2, M1, or whatever it is, because the most restrictive zoning has to be in place. And I think that was taken into consideration in the appraisal that was done through a third party. So there's a diminutive value that's assigned to that because he's restricting on what he could or could not do on the property. The conservation easement actually will basically exonerate everything. There will be nothing built on the property. It will be in conservation, and it will remain as it is today. There will be no homes or anything. There's no exceptions that I know of that were asked other than we would just basically do the restrictive conservation easement with the United States Navy through the REPI and the dig funds that the county uses.
And that was going to be my next question. I was reading through the easement agreement, and with this agreement, he's basically selling, eliminating any and all future development rights.
That's why I read it, and the restrictive easement, there was no exceptions. I mean, Ms. Jones and I work on several smaller parcels at times, and sometimes they may have a home, or they want to reserve one more parcel or an acre for their, for the child, and we certainly do that, and that's taken into consideration in the appraisal process. This was something that was not, the owner has not asked for anything, so the appraisal is as-is on conservation. There's two parts to the appraisal that's actually done. One is today, what it's worth, and then there's also after they put the conservation easement on it and what the encumbrances would cause to it. But yes, sir, basically, there will be no development on the property.
Thank you.
Mr. Cole. I saw your light. I didn't see hers. Do you have a question, Ms. Jones?
I don't have a question. I have a statement.
You have before.
Just to clarify, the standard restrictive easement does allow for one home on the property, but of course, any development has to be authorized, if you will, by both the restrictive easement and the zoning on the property. So just to clarify that.
Yeah. It actually states one 4,000-square-foot home. That's what it states. Silver culture, normal farming, and those kind of type activities are clearly spelt out for the individual.
Randy, currently with the M2 zoning, that you're saying only the north or the western end of it could not be built on for even commercial or industrial purpose?
It would limit them severely. They could put some warehouses in there and some small stuff in the APZ-1. But by the county code, in the adopted joint land use study code, it's Article 11, basically. A similar situation actually came up, way different than this subject here, not even tied to this subject. But Home Place Furniture was actually trying to put in a warehouse adjacent to Navialt, Whiting Field, Santa Rosa at one time. A lot of people were like, "No, you can't do that," but actually, it's a permitted use because the main goal in an accident potential zone is to put nobody to live there so we don't hurt anybody in the event there's an accident or a crash. Now, I know that some of the homes are actually in an APZ-2 and 1, but some of these were done well before any of the joint land use study or some of our programs in place.
And since this is M2 now, and it kind of meets that criteria as far as not putting homes under it, I look at this as if it could be developed. It was requested to go to M2. So I got one concern in the value of it being M2 versus being ag, that we pay that kind of money for it. And when it comes right down to it, whether it's REPI funds or state grant or whatever, it's our tax dollars being spent. So I got a problem with that in the fact that it's already a piece of property that would be, you know, that would correspond to what we would like to see out there rather than homes.
Sure.
And the other thing, you know, if it goes into a natural conservancy, there's absolutely no tax dollars off it then. Whereas if we get some development out there on an industrial basis, that's going to raise the tax base that we need. And I've always supported these, and will continue to support them, but in this particular instance where it's not homes, it's not going to be ag, it's just going to be basically off the tax rolls for now and forever, I got a little bit of heartburn with that.
Sure. And I understand. I'm not the property owner. I'm just, was approached with, hey, an individual wanted to go a different venue, wanted to basically give up the dream of whatever they were going to do. So it was just asked of us, and it is looking at the priority list as a number-three property. Didn't approach it at that time, and I do appreciate what you're saying about someone zoning it to a higher zone.
$6,700 plus per acre. I'd like to perhaps see what it would be if it was back to the original, you know, ag usage, what, how much difference?
Yeah, I don't know what it was prior to, but I'm going to leave it was ag or economic as.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Randy. Randy, the priority list, the number three, how often is that list updated? And was that priority, was that priority assigned to this piece of property prior to the rezoning or subsequent to the rezoning?
It was subsequent to the rezoning. After the joint land use study was put together, some great brains got together, well before I got here. A gentleman by the name Marty Martin and a lot of the staff at Santa Rosa got together and actually looked at future land use maps and development trends. And if you look at the priority map, which Marion Vance has, but it basically goes, if you look at 87, there was some development. You got UIL Properties on the west side was looking to develop underneath Flight Trax. Remember, we support about 1.5 million operations. About 300,000 or 400,000 of those would fly over some of these properties daily from 07:00 to midnight. And as you can look, if you look at the map as a whole, the difference between number one and 290 is basically about a point something-something. It's very, very tiny. A lot of the priority was given to anything that was underneath an accident potential zone, immediately adjacent to installation or near a clear zone. And then you can see where if there was a high opportunity for development. There's a property just south of Whiting Field. You can see it's like, I know it's hard to see on that map, but there's a light pink that's right below the blue there. That's the Aviation Park. That's actually, I think, number four or five on the list. Number one is actually the property just to the west of Whiting Field, North Field there. It was a blacky-black property that was done last year. That was the number-one parcel, and it took several years to get just to that one. Again, these are willing sellers. We try to work with them as best we can. Sometimes some folks are willing until they see the fair market value of what they may get or not get for an ag or whatever their property is owned. In this case, I understand what Mr. Cole's saying, absolutely. But the Navy was asked, hey, would this be something you'd want to partner on? Certainly because of its location, we would, and it actually would be contiguous with a lot of the property, and a lot of the effort's been done around the half-mile buffer on the installation. But that's what you're looking at today.
I have one question. I think I heard earlier in the presentation that this would still allow for one 4,000-square-foot home.
Yes, sir. The easements, the Navy easements is the more strict, ours is actually the most restrictive across DOT.
So my question now is to the attorney, this property would seem to me to remain on the tax rolls if, in fact, the owner retains the right to a 4,000-square-foot structure on there, then certainly we've got the right to tax that.
It remains on the tax roll either way. Yes, sir. We're acquiring an easement.
So either way, this will not be leaving the tax rolls.
That is correct.
It's not a fee simple purpose. It's just an easement. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I would think too that if it stays zoned M2, and if that has increased the value of the property, he would also continue to pay taxes on M2.
Not once the conservation easement is granted, though. He would pay taxes on the property. It would be taxed, but it would be taxed based upon the fair market value. And the fair market value would take into consideration the easement that would have been acquired. So it'll be taxed as basically a residential lot, but, you know, one that has a 112-acre residential lot with an easement on it, the right to one house.
Yeah.
Not, it would not be valued the same that it is now.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that clarification. I think everybody understands the importance of not taking things off the tax roll, and I hope someday, somewhere, Tallahassee will come up with a category for conservation so they pay at least a token tax so that it's not taking it totally off of the tax roll. They find enough money to pay big salaries to the folks that run that. A little bit for the rest of the crowd, too. All right, sir, we appreciate your presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Do you have any more questions?
Jerry Cooley, 6049, aren't he's way. I think we've heard that maybe we can put some warehouses there, maybe we can put a, maybe we can put a house there. A little more history and a little more of my personal feelings on this. Our thoughts of protecting Whiting Field started around 2002 and 2003. I wholly support it when it's within reason. My problem with this is this property was purchased in 2006. I'm going to tell you as a taxpayer, when it's already on the table, when the county has put the map out, when the county has expressed, yes, we're going to do this, I have a problem with somebody buying something in 2006 and then coming for a handout. I will also tell you that, yes, this property did pass through planning, and it came to the Board of County Commissioners, and I will remind everyone what the late Jim Williamson said. He said, "You've got your M2, but that means absolutely nothing until you're actually going to do something with that property." There was no plan. There was no thought. It was just simply it got pushed through our system to upzone that, which we all know what that means. You're now asking more money out of the taxpayers. I wholeheartedly disagree with that, considering that I believe this property will still have some industrial uses, considering that it is near the Aviation Park. I don't have a problem if Santa Rosa County wants to buy the whole thing, but I have about had enough of my tax dollars going to something that I'm never going to be able to walk around on. Over and over, we keep doing this. As stated, this property was purchased in 2006, well after, well after we had determined what we were going to do around Whiting Field. For all those folks that owned property prior to 2003, I'm fine with that. This one, however, was not. And that we've now heard that it may have warehouses on it, that it may have an industrial use. You know, I'm sorry, I believe that property owner should either maintain that property or we should buy the whole thing and add it to the Aviation Park. I rise in opposition of this specific piece of property. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Cole?
Thank you.
Through the chair to whoever can answer the question. Can these same funds be, yes, Randy, you'd probably be best, could these funds be used and instead of it being put in conservation, be put in county on them too?
Yes, sir. Our contribution towards the project, 75%, fee and/or easement. If the county desires to purchase the property in fee, then we do, there has to be another appraisal based on what you're going to use it for, but we would basically do the same thing. I don't know if you would want to use it, I don't know if the fee, as far as the encumbrances of the easement, what you would want and what section you would want, that would obviously affect the appraised value of the property. I imagine it would. Very similar situation if someone came in and got an appraisal on a property and they changed their mind and they need four houses instead of two houses. When you go and appraise, that actually reduces the price about $20,000 overall. I don't, our project and our program money certainly can secure an easement for incompatible development with some exceptions on fee and/or conservation easement. And we pay seventy-five percent if it's fee and/or conservation. So, I guess that would be a question is if the county desires to do that, we'd have to talk to Ms. Jones and certainly figure out which section or how you would want to do the property and what you would, what exceptions you would want on it. So, then you'd have to order an appraisal to take those into consideration and whether or not the landowner would take that value.
Okay. Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that's a very attractive option. I mean, if it is in fact an option. I tend to agree with Jerry on this. I mean, it's adjacent to our industrial park. If that's the price and we can acquire the fee or if we're something close to that, then it seems to make sense. It provides the same benefit in terms of buffering out incompatible uses, but it makes that property available for future industrial growth in the area. So, I would like to see how we can explore that prior to making final decisions.
Let's make that into form of a motion that the staff explore that and get back to us with the option.
We can move it to Thursday and direct staff to explore acquisition of the fee through a joint partnership with the Navy.
Now, do you do that without objection?
Without objection.
Sure.
Air not passes.
Me and Angie are clear on that. There's a guy that we deal with at the region. His name is Mr. Jerry Bush, Jacksonville. It's real estate lit guy. What we'll do is we'll coordinate with him and express that there's been a change. But with the landowner, I think that's going to have, I mean, you'll have to do that. I can't do that. I'm limited what I can do.
The staff will work, the staff will work it out and bring it back to us Thursday with the option. And then we will be able to make the decision whether to continue, you know.
Yes, sir.
There's three, now there'd be three ways. Buy it, do this, or do nothing.
Yes, sir.
So, we'll look at it Thursday.
No, not a problem.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Cole? Randy, hang on just a second. You said a whole lot to answer a short question, so I'm going to, I need some clarification. Okay. Yes, it can be done, period. Okay, I don't, yes or no? It can be done.
If the county buys something in fee, yes, sir. We pay, we can use our repi funds for fee. But whatever exceptions are going to be on the property, if I'm correct, will have to be taken into, so another appraisal will have to be done.
Well, that's where I'm lost. If the property appraised, which I think is ridiculously high, but $754,000, $6,700 an acre, okay? Let's say if that stands, why would we have to do another appraisal? Why would that price change? If we're having appraisal on industrial property and the county decides, okay, instead of putting this in conservation, we just want to use the funds and buy it, now it belongs to us instead of them, where's the change there?
Our program has the keyword repi. It's Threatiness and Wildlife Protection Initiative. And it's titled Title X. And conservation and easements and restrictive uses of incompatible development is basically the focus of it. And that's being really giving you a short overview of the whole program. But...
And the appraisal was for an easement, not for the purchase price of the property. That's the diminution of value based upon this easement. So, if we are actually acquiring the property, we can anticipate that we must have a new appraisal and we can anticipate that it will be a higher amount of money for us to buy the property outright.
Well, I can anticipate the owner of it being happy with what he's getting because if we get, from what I understand now, he would still be responsible to keep it insured, pay taxes on it, all this. No, if we get to conserve, if it goes to a conservation easement, the way we lined it up for, he would still have to pay whatever little bit of taxes, keep it insured in case somebody got hurt on it, be responsible for the property versus just saying, hey, I'm taking that money and whatever we settled on and I'm done with it. But that's open to negotiation, right, at this point?
If we buy the restrictive easement, he still owns the land. It has a lesser value because of the restriction on it, but he still owns it, which means he still has the rights and responsibilities, again, hampered though they may be by the restrictive easement. But I think what we're talking about now is actual acquisition of the property where it becomes ours. And we can certainly explore that between now and Thursday.
Well, we were to pass that one. We've agreed that the staff will explore that and report back to us. And thank you very much, Randy. Do you have a comment you want to make on what's just gone down here?
Etta Lawler, twenty-five thirty-two Cedar Crest Lane, Navarre, Florida. I just caution you on appraisals. Appraisals are a matter of opinion. You can get four different appraisals and the opinions will vary sometimes greatly. So, just take it for what it's worth, but do your own research, pull up your own comps and come to see if the appraisal opinion is even accurate in the ballpark. I've always supported protecting military bases so they don't pull out. I have no issues with purchasing easements or land. The only thing, I'd like you to make sure that the taxpayer's investment is being protected and you spend the money wisely. In the past, I definitely had issues with the wording of your easements. They were horrid. They did not protect the taxpayer's investment. I would like, and I know that I've had back and forth communication with Randy Roy about this because I believe the Navy writes the easement. You guys just sign it. I haven't studied this latest one. I didn't have time, but I would like to know for sure because the way they were written, it would be easy for that easement to revert to the property owner. And I would like it definitely in writing that say if the military pulls out or somebody sends a ninety day letter to the Navy that they want to do something on the property that's not allowed, the county gets full notice. And if the Navy no longer needs the easement, that they will definitely revert to the county. Not just stay in the Navy's archives for years. That the easement will revert to the county.
Thank you for your comments.
I don't know if Randy can answer that question or Ms. Jones.
We will get it sorted out. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record.
Good morning. Romi White, five-seven-seven-five, R and R Lane in Milton. Over the years, there's been, you know, discussions about the Whiting Aviation Park. And some of the research I've done has indicated that it's going to take at least a million to upgrade the Whiting Field substation to provide three-phase power. And there's going to be millions of dollars of cost in infrastructure just to get the first company in there. Do you think that a company is going to pay to upgrade that? And if not, what's the county's plan to make those infrastructure upgrades to get that park to be a feasible option?
Commissioner Cole? I mean, Commissioner Salter, pardon me, sir.
Mr. Chairman, anybody knows that anytime when you're building a new industrial park, whether it's an aviation park or East Milton Industrial Park, it's going to take infrastructure. So, somebody's going to have to pay for it. Most of the time, it's going to be the county. As Scamby County moves forward with possibly relocating OLF eight to OLFX in Santa Rosa County, there's a projected cost of $20 million for that. But to answer Romi's question, everyone remembers we had done a master plan for the aviation park a few years back. Just recently, probably in the last six to eight months, I've met with Shannon Oval Tree and PBS and J Engineering or Atkins Engineering now. And we are now breaking that master plan down into different phases. Shannon should be bringing to us over the next few weeks, Phase One of the park. And that would prepare the park to get that first tenant in. And sometimes you got to have a commitment from the first tenant before you can try to activate state economic development infrastructure funds as well. So, hopefully in the next, I'm going to say six weeks, twelve weeks, Shannon will be bringing us a proposal on the first phase of it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Salter alluded to it, but I want to make it a little more explicit. He referred to state economic development funds. There's a, I believe it's the CDBG grant program. Sometimes I get lost in the acronym soup of these programs. But I think the CDBG funding can provide up to $750,000 to improve the infrastructure in an industrial park. Once, again, once we land that first tenant, once that first contract is signed. So, that's three-quarters of a million dollars potentially that could go towards developing the infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you for that discussion. The next item on the agenda is item number three is update on Navarre Beach fishing pier operations and business plans by TC's Coastal Pier LLC. Gentlemen? Name and address, please, sir, for the record. You know how to turn the light on, right? The right-hand button. There you go.
Scott Rayner, two oh one Pensacola Beach Road, Gulf Breeze, Florida.
Joey Bryant, one ninety-nine Camelia Street, Gulf Breeze, Florida.
Gentlemen, we wanted to come today just to give an update. Excuse our lack of presentation material. Our office was one of the places in Gulf Breeze that flooded. So, this weekend, we've been moving and actually we're opening up our new office today in Harbertown. Just to remind everybody, remind the commissioners not to bring up old feelings, but the original RFP stated that we were not allowed to include any capital improvements. It was under everybody's assumption that everybody, or that we were going to inherit a turnkey operation. We all know that it didn't pan out that way. When we walked in New Year's Day, there was no, there was no store, there was no kitchen, no bar, no walk-in fridge, pretty much zero assets. But rather than getting involved with discussions between the county and the prior management, we instead focused on what we have to do to get all the operations open. And, I mean, we were forced, and not forced, but our goal was to adapt and overcome.
So, I'm just going to kind of go down a list of just some of the obstacles we faced and overcame as well as just some of the new things that we've implemented there at the pier. Again, this would be great for PowerPoint, so I apologize, but just bear with us. The first thing, you know, four forty-five AM on New Year's Day, when we walked into the building, we were greeted by a huge crowd. Unfortunately, it wasn't a crowd of people, but rather a family of rats and their friends and their friends. And that was one of the biggest things we dealt with at first was there's a huge rodent problem, pest problem. Took us weeks to get rid of that. We rebuilt and moved the counter to a better position. Our view of visitors coming onto the pier, try and reduce the number of people that just try and walk up right on the pier without paying. We've got a better view now of the counter. We put a sign up as well with the prices for walkers as well, which seemed to be kind of one of the, you know, people would plead ignorance. Oh, I thought it was just fishermen had to pay. But so, we put a sign as well stating that walkers need to pay the county as well. Weather, obviously, 2014 has been quite an interesting year in regards to weather. Two times the pipes underneath the bathroom froze, one time actually prompting the renovation of the bathrooms, which took a few weeks. And with the distance from the pier to the other working bathrooms, what we did in the meantime is coastal concessions used our golf cart to transport any of the elderly or handicapped people who needed assistance in getting to those bathrooms. We also hired several of the pier employees from the previous management just to try and ensure as smooth of a transition as possible from the old to new. We reran all the communication wiring to bring everything up to industry standards. And also, when we moved the counter, we had to also rerun the Cat Five cable to get it over to the new position. We reorganized the store to optimize space and customer traffic as well as making the store more appealing and inviting to customers and just try and make it look more like a retail store and not just a storage area with a counter. Coastal Concessions has provided and fronted all the costs to run a separate point-of-sale system for the county. This way, we're keeping all the revenue from pier admissions separate from any revenue that comes in from the store. We did with this point-of-sale system as well. It's portable on battery power. And so, what we've done on some of our busier weekends and what we plan to do on some of the weekends in the summer when it's busy is setting up a tent basically right in front of the gate. This way, no one's going to be able to walk on without paying and we can sit there and collect payment for the county without being locked in to stand behind the counter. We have done and we will continue to do background checks on all of our employees that are working at the pier. Coastal Concessions rebuilt and repainted the outside of the store to include a new bar, a new walk-in fridge, new railing and benches and table seating for our guests. We've also installed new volleyball nets and started a new volleyball league there. Cleaned up operations and started enforcing the county's rules in regards to fishing tournaments and other special events, making sure that they have the proper insurance requirements and everything. Coastal Concessions has also introduced over a dozen local vendors to our offerings at the store. This number will increase in the coming months to give more people from Santa Rosa County and the surrounding counties an opportunity to showcase their products and services at our store. Coastal Concessions is in the process of starting our own 501(c)(3). We will be using this for the local scholarship fund that TC's Coastal Pier had put in our original proposal. The hope is by creating our own 501(c)(3), we will be able to offer more than just the $1,500 for the scholarships that we had originally said. We've been working closely with Sonia Lusk at the county. And thanks to the county's support, we have developed a new badge system for fishing passes. This has reduced the turnaround time from a matter of months to a matter of days. So, we've gotten some great feedback from the fishermen about this. We've also made a policy of only allowing smaller bands, usually just one person and a guitar. But we're trying to eliminate drums, eliminate six or seven-piece bands there and try to make the music a little more family-friendly. So, we're not only, we're hopefully alleviating any noise complaints from our neighbors, the summer winds and some of the surrounding condos, but also leaving aiding any complaints just about the, you know, any kind of foul language or anything at the pier. One of the main things we're most proud of is we've just implemented a pier marshal program. This is basically, we've just given, we're imagining about a dozen or so. We've got four or five right now and assume we'll have, you know, by the summer, we'll have the rest of them. But fishermen who are out there long enough to where they can kind of help us with not only enforcing all of the rules, but also to, we're going to give them vests and let them know, hey, you know, if you and your eight-year-old son come out fishing for the first time, go find someone in a vest. They'll help you, you know, bait your hook. They'll show you how to tie your line and everything. And so, it'll not only help people who might need assistance with the fishing, but also what we're hoping too is just the presence of people in the vest will keep the language, some of the problem drinking and those things, those things keep them at bay. You know, it's a golf cart. You can kind of see it coming from a long way. Or when one of us are walking out there, you know, we could get a complaint and then by the time you make it a quarter mile down the pier, whoever the person that was being complained about has already changed or thrown something away or done something. So, we're hoping kind of the same way a lit street or the presence of police officers, you can't really tell exactly what's reduced, but we're just hoping for an overall reduction in some of the complaints and problems. Now, I'm going to go on and address the elephant in the room and that would be the restaurant and the delays that have been involved so far. Though we cannot speak for Mr. Benakis on why it has taken so long to open the restaurant, what we can assure you is that every day, we're doing everything in our power to speed this process up and to make sure that it is opened as soon as possible. When Coastal Concessions realized that Mr. Benakis's speed was not up to our standards or the county's standards, we promptly addressed the situation, closed our bar operations and got our own food license. Since then, we've been providing sandwiches, wraps, salad, chicken, fresh fruit and snacks to our customers. If Memorial Day weekend comes and the kitchen is still not open, Coastal Concessions will take the appropriate actions to ensure the goals of the county will be met and take matters into our own hands to get it open in a matter of a week or two. And that's pretty much all we have. We did send you our business plan last week and this was mostly just a highlight of that. But we thank you for your time and any questions that you have, we'll be happy to answer.
We thank you for your efforts and we really respect what you're doing. And everybody likes what's happening. I've had one persistent complaint and that is about the lighting. And I don't know if you're responsible for the lighting or the county's responsible for the lighting.
That is the county.
I'm sorry?
That is the county's responsible for the lighting.
Okay.
Just as an update, we had a mechanical failure during the weather event that killed all the lights. The replacement lights have been ordered. They're in stock and they'll be worked and replaced as maintenance people can get to them. The fifteen lights that are out will be replaced.
When?
Well, right now, they're behind the lifeguard stand construction as far as from a maintenance perspective. Well, right now, they're behind the lifeguard stand construction as far as from a maintenance perspective. But we'll get them just as quick as we can, they're on our list of things to do, sir.
Okay, they've been there a while. I appreciate your attention to that, and thank you very much for your explanation. And we're all looking forward to a restaurant, but we appreciate what you've done, we really do. And the comments from the public that we're getting are good. Anybody else have anything to add to that? Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
This is just an update, so was no action required. Item number four is discussion of the annual agreement with Karen Harrell for Beaches to Woodlands Event Coordinator Services as recommended by the Tourist Development Council. Details are in the backup. Does anybody have a question, comment on that? She's been doing this for quite some time. I move approval without objection. Move, we moved this to Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number five is discussion of a three-year renewal for WebSense Internet Security System subscription at a cost of $31,446.04 with SHI incorporated as WebSense, as the WebSense state of Florida contractor. Again, the details are in the backup. Recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number six is discussion of a request from Charles Libris for a corrective agreement to the leased real property located on the Var Beach. Ms. Jones, I would appreciate it if you would brief this just for the public because there's been some confusion about what this was all about.
Mr. Libris has a lease agreement with the county from 1981, which clearly states that there will be an attachment to it called Schedule I. It isn't. It simply got left out when recorded. So he requested what he called an amended lease. I have called it a corrective lease to attach the sketch that should have been attached to begin with and the legal description that describes the fairly rudimentary sketch. So nothing about the substance of the agreement changes in any way.
And the other confusion is which piece of property. Apparently, Mr. Libris has an interest in more than one piece of property, and this is not the property in the Navar Beach Park in the Maritime Park area. It's the property down west toward the National Seashore, and it is for the purpose of correcting some legal details. It doesn't add to or take away from any of its rights or privileges as they stand. They'll be the same after this passes or fails as they are right now.
You are correct.
Okay. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number seven is discussion of scheduling evening meetings at the Tiger Point Community Center regarding proposed additional facility. Our daytime meeting was extremely well-attended. I think there was probably standing room only. Any discussion from the board? Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Walker?
Just any input that you would have on the time that you want to have that of a timeframe. We did not get a chance to look at your calendars. I'm just...
What's the will of the board? I'd like to get it done sooner rather than later. If we could get it done this month, I think it would be
Oh, absolutely.
to our benefit if we could get this done this month.
Let us get back with you then before Thursday, and then we'll have a date and a time.
We would appreciate that very much. Commissioner Lynchard.
Just as, throw this out for staff and everyone else to consider, our next committee meeting is the 19th. We could hold our committee meeting at night down in the South End, start at 6 o'clock. Just something to mull over.
I mean, as much time as that takes, I mean, I... It would seem like to me that if we could do the committee meeting during its regular time and then whatever input you were gonna get on the other. I don't know what the bookings are on that. This is gonna be kind of prime time down at the community center as far as backing up, getting set up for a 9:00 a.m. meeting again on a Monday. We certainly could do it the 19th or the 20th, somewhere through there. Whatever the board would want, we'll work with you on that. But that was the week we had targeted.
All right. Well, I tend to agree with the administrator on that one, Commissioner Lynchard. We may run into a horrendously long evening if we do the committee meeting and then that. So let them take a look at it and bring us an offer back to the table. We'll see what it looks like. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number eight is discussion of the scope of work and contract with Title Basin Government Consulting LLC for disaster recovery administrative services. This requires action today. And I asked the attorney for an explanation this morning. If you don't mind, would you just share that with the public so we don't generate any misconceptions? Ms. Jones?
Yes, sir, from, I guess it was last summer, we've entered into a contract with Title Basin. I'll call it a standby contract, if you will, to kind of have them lined up and in the hopper if we need any of their services related to any sort of disaster or similar event. And based on last week's rain, that is now the case, we need their services. So they have submitted a task order, which I know you all didn't receive until this morning, but a task order outlining exactly what it is they can assist us with, again, related to last week's storm.
Thank you very much. So what this does is tee up a contractor we have already had in place since 2013, and we'll task him to do some specific things for the county. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection.
Please action today, Mr. Taylor.
Oh, I'm sorry, it does, thank you. Good morning, world. All right, I move approval without objection. Here, none, it passes, thank you, Commissioner Carter. Okay, item number nine is information only. Public hearing item scheduled for 9:30 a.m. Tuesday, May the 8th, is short. An amendment to ordinance 2006-38 regarding consolidating building, mechanical, and plumbing boards of adjustments and appeals into one board. Also, the vacation of Circle Lane north of Maplewood Drive between Block 17, Lot 8, and Block 9, Lot 1 in the fifth addition to Santa Rosa Shore subdivision as requested by Edwin A. Eddy. That's just information only, and that concludes the administrative report. And up to the engineer's report, Mr. Blaylock.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number one is a discussion of the approval for the construction plans for Borqay Cove subdivision. This is a 67-lot subdivision that's located in Working District 1, and you can see that reflected on this. This is Highway 90, and this is the school property that was recently purchased. You've seen this a number of times, they're still working to try to get their D.O.
Okay. I have a question that's gonna apply to both of these. What about flooding issues in our last experience on both pieces of property? But you can address this piece first, and then we'll deal with the next one as we get to it. Do we have any inputs, know what that looks like or whatever? Pull that mic a little closer, because you speak so softly, it's really hard to hear you sometimes.
Yes, on the Borqay Cove, the subdivision approaching for the D.O., they have met our requirements, which is a 100-year storm event. We adopted the 100-year storm back in 1996. And just for layman's terms, that's 13 and a half inches in a 24-hour period. The events of last Tuesday exceeded that and exceeded its rating.
Therefore, my question, what was their experience? What happened out there?
Well, this one is not under construction, it's just raw land and...
Did it flood?
There's no evidence that this property flooded, but of course, it's raw land. Looking at the topography, this one would stand to do very well because it falls back to pond creek.
Thank you, sir. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes.
Item number two is New Haven Estates. This is a completed subdivision. They have installed all the improvement per their development order, and it indeed experienced that same rainfall event. There is standing water in the wetlands area that surrounds it. You can see it a little more clearly in this slide here. There is standing water in an existing pond and a wetland that is continuing to discharge. The roadways are not under water at this time, and it did function well.
You said that roadway is not underwater, is that...
It was not, that's correct. That's information I received.
Thank you.
And it is platted, and they are trying to bring it up into the county maintenance.
Okay. I recommend we move this to Thursday without objection. Here, none, it passes. Yes, sir.
I'd like to take a moment, and I don't think people realize how significant what our county engineer, Roger Blaylock, just said. And we've had a tremendous event, and Santa Rosa County has always based their floods on a 100-year event, where Escamia County has based theirs on a 25-year event. So I know this has happened a couple times before. I'm gonna stand up here and say, I thank you for keeping your guns on that. I know there's oftentimes gnashing of teeth about how large a holding pond should be, but we had flooding problems, but we had flooding problems in low-lying areas, which we typically expect. If we had not have run 100-year holding ponds throughout our subdivisions, even on the flat tops of hills, we would have had problems. And I want you to get credit for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coey. Yes, ma'am.
Etta Lawler, 2532 Cedar Crest Lane. Lot of times flooding issues, and maybe the county can go through their Lee and Development Code regarding driveways, walkways, patios around pools. And a lot of homeowners association covenants will sometimes require a concrete driveway. And if you study flooding issues, it's because a lot of times Mother Nature can't absorb things. And if we concrete everything, that means we have runoff, runoff into the roads. And I've had disagreements sometimes on the cost of driveways. People say, well, they're too expensive to put in a driveway that will allow the water to seep through you or your walkways, your sidewalks to your house or even around your pool. Yes, pavers are extremely high, some of the crushed rock material are high, asphalt that water goes through is high. But I've even taken pictures of things over in Escamia County where it's rock and you have this like grating, you put the rock in it, and it looks very nice. You can even do a patchwork and grow grass around it. And that would help a lot on these flooding issues in these low-landing areas if we could educate people to maybe do it and remove any restrictions that don't allow them doing it that way, because I think we have some restrictions. I know in the Navar Town Center and stuff, there is restrictions that you can't do that without getting a variance. So let's make it easier for people to do it where the water, Mother Nature brings water, it hits the ground, and it goes into the ground. And it just doesn't roll down a driveway, because some of your road wipeouts are these driveway runoffs wiping out the road. Thank you.
Thank you, and I couldn't agree more with your comments. We did that at our new home after Ivan, and we've just been so proud of it. We've paid more than paid for itself. Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. My question is, if you had flooding in a certain area, is there any requirement for somebody to go back and correct whatever caused the flooding, like putting in extra drainage ditches or something like that?
Yes, ma'am, in the really severe areas, we're master planning that right now, and we'll be working our way through those problems with remediation and hopefully prevent this sort of an event from ever happening again.
So rather than just ignoring it and say, well, you know, when the floodwaters go down, we don't have to worry about it anymore, you're actually gonna do something about...
We're not ignoring it, no, ma'am. We are master planning it, that's part of the discussion. You've heard this morning about this, the contract that I asked the attorney to explain. That's part of the process. We've already signed one contract and ordered about $400,000 to master plan the largest subdivision in Santa Rosa County. And when the funds begin to flow, we're gonna master plan the problems that we've had specifically in the South End and the pockets that we had in the rest of the county and work our way through them in a systematic manner.
And who's responsible for paying for the additional flood protection?
That gets to be a real long and convoluted answer, so I'll let you ask the attorney that. But generally, we would be seeking hazardous mitigation grants for the funding source and then the taxpayer...
So you don't go back and require engineering companies that said, oh, yeah, if you do this, you're gonna be all right? They're not responsible for financial?
They're responsible for engineering up to a specific point, and this rain exceeded anything Santa Rosa County's seen ever. So we, our systems were just totally overwhelmed by the water. You heard the engineer say that the 100-year planning was, is it 16 inches, Mr. Blaylock?
Thirteen and a half.
Thirteen and a half, and we nearly doubled that, so. But thank you for your questions, your comments. All right. Yes, sir, Jack, come on.
Jack Bonney, 817 Dolphin Road. I just want to follow up on her question. And I sent a comment to Mr. Whitfield in the parking lot, and I'll just repeat it here, is when I moved into Garson Point area, we had a lot of flooding there. The county worked very hard to put in some drainage into some canals. We had a street, Porpoise Road, no doubt in my mind, with this rain, the house on that street would have flooded. Because of their work, it did not flood. So thank you very much. Stephen Furman also did a good job on that.
And just for the record, the folks in Road and Bridges and the other emergency folks in Santa Rosa County have been working 16, 18-hour days, six days a week. So for those unsung heroes, they deserve a big thank. So when you see them out and about, thank them for their efforts. Yes, sir, name and address. Push the right-hand button, there you go.
Okay. I understand there's a lot of flooding going on. I live on Vanity Fair Road.
Sir, you're gonna have to give us your name and address for the record.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. My name is Daniel Dumas. I live at 6,001 Vanity Fair Road. I understand it is in the city, okay? Three, four years ago, when I called the city and you guys to come out and look at the drainage problem after a major flooding, everything flows to my yard. You wouldn't think, because everything flows downhill, well, it comes to my yard. I can't cut my grass, I got issues that my foundation might be going away. It was just built in 2007. It's not an issue now, but I need to address it. I don't know who the commissioner is that is actually, I guess I'm a little ignorant at this point, but it's gonna change a little bit. I don't know who the commissioner is over my area. And three, four years ago, when I called, all they did was come out and look at it, they did nothing. Only thing they did recently was to fix the culvert, and that's it. And now that's washed away because of this flood. Everything flows right to my yard. Who can I talk to to actually help me out with that issue?
If you'll call the main desk at 983-1877?
983-1877.
983-1877, they will patch you through, and they will take your complaint and make up a work order.
I'm sorry?
If you will call that number, 983-1877, tell them you want to report a flooding problem. They'll take your complaint and turn it into, it'll be turned over and evaluated and turned into a work order, if that's what needs to be done.
Okay, is that gonna fix the runoff that goes into my yard? Or is that just...
I have no idea, I have no idea what your problem is.
Okay.
But if you will put that in the system, somebody will go look at it and make a definitive decision.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. That completes the engineer's report. Do we have time? You want to take a break now? Let's go ahead and take, take 10, is okay? Take 10 minutes, please, and we'll be back at, what will that be, 3:07 after the hour? Thank you. Mr. Chairman, in the, I had, in the kind of flash of last week, I had left Ms. Cox. If you remember, Ms. Cox had requested the pink ribbon campaign at the Navarre Park on ninety-eight. And I had promised her that we could be on this committee meeting. And I overlooked it and they're here to address that. If we could add that to the agenda and get them a decision Thursday. I believe they're waiting to start their information campaign and that kind of work. So, Ms. Cox?
Absolutely. Let's add them right now. With indulgence of the other commissioners, please, let's go ahead and hear that now. If you would, come up and give us your name and address for the record. Push the right-hand button and that'll turn your light on.
Joyce Cox, sixty-eight seventy-five Brocade Court, Navarre. We came before you last year in October to do, or September, to do an October event where we decorated Navarre Park. I understand that there was some complaint or a complaint, I'm not sure exactly, about the fact that we used all the pavilions. We did not. We only used one, the main pavilion. That was our center of our decorating for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And in October, later in the month, we had a one-day event in the park where we used the whole entire park. And we got insurance to cover that event. And we're asking to do that again this year, exactly like last year's event. Decorate the one main pavilion, would leave all the other pavilions available for rental. I mean, even the main pavilion would still be available for rental. It would just be decorated with the breast cancer information and so forth. And then we'd have our main event, October the eleventh. It's a fundraiser and all of our funds go one hundred percent to benefit the people of Santa Rosa County for mammograms. Last year, we got insurance to cover that. We will do that again this year. Name in the county is additional insured. And we would like to also ask for a fee waiver again this year since we are a nonprofit organization and none of us take salaries for any of it.
Yes, ma'am. Well, if you get the information to Mr. Walker, it will be on the agenda for Thursday and we will deal with it Thursday. And we appreciate you bringing that to our attention. We saw we overlooked it.
That's quite all right. I know what y'all have been through, what everybody's been through.
All right, thank you. Next is Public Services Committee, Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is discussion of the assumption of the HHRP mortgage and transfer of ownership of the property located at sixty-nine eighty-five Martin Road, Milton, to an income-qualified family member. You have backup in your agenda unless there are any questions. I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
And item two is discussion of a floodplain variance request of V-zone construction standards for a lot located at twenty-twenty-one Jessica Way in Navarre. Mr. Gomillion, you want to?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this would be a similar request to what we've heard recently relative to construction method. This is not a variance to the elevation. And so, which is a pretty significant distinction. In this case, the natural grade of the property is higher than the FEMA flood elevation. It is not higher than our freeboard requirement, but it is higher than the FEMA elevation. This is a request to vary from construction pilings. And so, that is the, the owner is here if you desire to hear from him.
Mr. Bonney, did you have something you wanted? Come on up.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lynch. Just a comment about that is that you guys may or may not, but if you are intending to approve that variance, by the way, Jack Bonney, eight seventeen Dolphin Road. I'm sorry. I would ask that you consider adding additional erosion control procedures to the area. I think many of you are very familiar. I didn't send this picture to all of you, but in two thousand twelve, we had a rain occurrence where there was somebody had piled up some red clay in anticipation of putting a foundation down at a higher elevation and putting a slab on it. And we had a rain event to put that into the bay. And if you've forgotten that, I can send you the pictures again. I'm really not in favor of anybody putting huge amounts of red clay and then trying to put a concrete block around it and putting concrete on top of it. So, I just want you to strongly consider that, the erosion control. If you do approve the variance, I would appreciate if you didn't approve the variance. I think piling homes are the way to go when you're that close to the water. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Any questions by any members of the board? Mr. Roberts, do you want to say anything? Otherwise, I'll move this to Thursday. And in the meantime, I'll ask Mr. Gomillion to, I'll get briefed up on our current erosion control methods and see where we are there. I'll move this to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes Public Services.
Okay, Public Works Committee, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Item number one is discussion of revised traffic signal maintenance and compensation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation. We have backup in our books. Mr. Whitfield, any other comments on that?
No, sir. We support the change.
Move that to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
Item two is discussion of purchase of the following mowers for Parks Department from Smith Tractor Company Incorporated based on comparison shopping. It's two seventy-two-inch deck diesel mowers at fourteen thousand twenty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents for a total of twenty-eight thousand fifty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents and one forty-eight-inch deck gasoline mower at six thousand nine hundred, excuse me, six thousand ninety-one dollars and seventy-six cents. I do so, move that to Thursday for final vote without objection.
Your note passes.
That concludes this report.
Okay, next is Budget and Financial Management Committee, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Item one is discussion of bids received for Home Program Housing Reconstruction Project located at thirty-seven forty-nine Escambia Avenue and J. Low bidder meeting specifications is Bill Walther Construction at a bid of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. I'd move that to Thursday for final vote without objection.
Your note passes.
Item two is discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one one nine in the amount of six thousand fourteen dollars to transfer funds from the capital fund to the general fund to purchase Microsoft Windows system software from the state of Florida contract as approved at the March twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
Item three is discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one twenty in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for the maintenance of the Town of J recreational park from District Three recreational funds as approved at the April twenty-fourth regular Board of County Commissioners' meeting. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
Item four, discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one twenty-one in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to carry forward funds for the Navarre Beach Rodeo at ten thousand dollars and for portable stage for the city of Milton, five thousand dollars as approved at the April twenty-four, two thousand fourteen Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting from the tourist development tax fund. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
Item five, discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one twenty-two in the amount of sixty-two thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars for site certification process for the Jeff Yates Road site from economic development reserves in the electronic, electric franchise fee fund as approved at the April twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
Item six, discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one twenty-three in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars to correct the prior year budget and current year budget for the Cornell Drive MSBU and to properly recognize the debt service in the Cornell MSBU fund. Move that to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
Item seven is budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one twenty-one, one twenty-four, excuse me, in the amount of forty-one thousand four hundred and eighty dollars to carry forward funds for the Peter Prince East Apron Rehabilitation and Expansion Project as approved at the April twenty-four, two thousand fourteen Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting from airport funds. Do so, move it to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
Item made is discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one twenty-five in the amount of twenty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars to carry forward funds for the Navarre Beach Causeway Turn Lane per FDOT revisions as approved at the April twenty-four, two thousand fourteen Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting from the Road and Bridge Reserve Fund. I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
Item nine is discussion of budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one twenty-six in the amount of three hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars to carry forward funds for the Holly by the Sea Drainage Study as approved at the April twenty-four, two thousand fourteen Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting from the Road and Bridge Fund. I'll move that to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
And item ten is the county expenditure and check register, which I'll check before Thursday and have on your desk for final. Do that, move that to Thursday without objection.
Your note passes.
That concludes this report.
Thank you.
Public forum, anybody have anything to bring before this floor?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think our county administrator is gonna give us an update on some of the activities surrounding the flooding. Why don't we do that before we go into public forum?
No, let's do the activities, if you don't mind, we'll do the activities first. How much time do you anticipate, Mr. Walker? I want you to do it first, so just wondering, how much time do you anticipate? Ten, fifteen minutes? Okay, let's, if you don't mind, we're gonna do the flooding updates and then we'll take the public forum. Wish we'd added that when we were doing the agenda items, I was unaware you wanted to do that.
do that. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Walker, you have?
Yes, sir. He's got to put the power point up.
Okay.
All right, Roger. Now, this just shows the information that we had gotten from National Weather Service regarding the amount of rain that had fallen. And you see the, obviously, that white out is the largest amount of rain and then you can see that it goes kind of separate from that. So it really was pretty widespread, at least in the central and the southern parts of the county. That certainly shows how badly the Escambia County, the city of Pensacola were hit coming across to the Florida town area, really almost running the US 90 as you see, the Avalon area, the East Milton, and of course Gulf Breeze and the peninsula. So it was an awful lot of rain and the estimates that I think that we saw ended up being about 23 inches in places for us. And that just shows a different representation of it. And it was an awful lot of water on top of saturated groundwater. And this just shows, at least at this particular point in time, the number of calls and reports that we had gotten regarding waters and water in homes and those type of things. And so you see kind of the widespread nature of the vent. And I'm sure this was just a picture of time, snapshot in time and those numbers have changed every time that some period of time changes. And so that's, you see the preliminary damage assessments that were done and 782 homes were impacted and 355 were impacted, 100 affected, 180 minor, 212 major, one destroyed, and 34 are inaccessible. And I assume that's inaccessible probably for flooding, 51 businesses were impacted and then you see how that's, were impacted and how that's distributed. You see the number of roadways, 250 work orders, damaged roads in the week are under control. We estimate that, and I had sent this out to the board, I believe it was Saturday morning, that we believe that we will pursue the repairs to State Road 399 in-house to go ahead and upgrade the pipe through there, repair the road, and do it one time instead of if the board will recall it at our briefing, I believe it was Thursday, our plan was to do a temporary fix and then come back and do the engineering and a more permanent fix after the public works people looked at it a little closer and thought it through. We think we can fix it the one time and not have to have two construction projects and get that done. I think that's going to be, that's really the most significant artery, if you will, that was severed during the event. And so, as quickly as we can get that back up, we felt like the better. And you see, in relative terms, we had a relatively small amount of damage to the buildings. The Santa Rosa Health Department did have eight to 15 inches of water in there. It's out of service right now, we have done the emergency demolition and repairs and then we will be proceeding with the full repairs on that. Some intrusion at the Milton Library. The EOC had some water intrusion on the west side of the building that we'll need to address. And then some roof leaks here and there. And I believe the South Service Center had a damage to the roof, relatively minor but with some water damage in the building at some level, but not a great deal. Go back, Roger, to the, okay, very good. You're ahead of me. Then next you see the, next you see the crop damage. Then you just see these were damage assessments done by the Cooperative Extension people and I assume the, probably the USDA and those, and that just outlines what those damages. Then again, we have understand that the state is going to conduct flyovers of the damaged area to try to get real-time maps of the damage and get that to, as you certainly see, they're flying us in the Escambia County, certainly where the worst part of the storms were. And when those are available, we'll have them available online, those impacts. And then, of course, we, immediately, the first is always response phase and you see the ability to deal with lives and protect property. You see the 911 calls that we got for storm response, the fire alarms, the traffic accidents, the electrical incidents, requests for public assistance in storm-related fires. We had the Gulf Breeze, Rec Center was open and it had a population of 42. Milton Community Center as a shelter was open and its highest population was eight. There, Roger. And then you just see what, these are just what we do, we're working through the damage assessments, working through the assessments of the county facilities. We had landfill damage, we had, you know, we've got the mosquito control that starts up today. So we'll be reaching out to the businesses and chambers, trying to be sure that, because we have had a number of businesses impacted and how we can help them and help them through the SBA process. And we're certainly continuing to track the event cost in that regard. The decisions that the board will be called upon to make is typically after an event, and this is a different event of any that we've had in the last number of years, that obviously, we're still going to have some amount of debris collection. There were two homes in my neighborhood that sustained probably at least a foot of damage in the home. They've already started their demolition and pulling the materials to the right of way. And those are going to be some decisions that we'll be bringing back to the board and some options in that regard as we work with Mr. Whitfield, we're titled basin and staff as we go through how we need to position ourselves on that. The possible disaster recovery center locations, this we had mentioned, the DRCs, I don't know if that will be one or two. Certainly, we had widespread damage, there certainly seems to need to be the need in the south in the Gulf Breeze and certainly the Midway areas and then the Florida Town Pace area. So we'll try to be working some options in that particular regard. And then we'll be, much like we did today, we'll be, I know that engineering and public works are working through the projects that we need to be doing as far as getting our roadway repairs done, some blowouts that we had impacting residents in the Villa and the East Grand Point areas. And then, just, we have a contract with Southern Site Management to use the county attorney's analogy, the off-the-shelf. We have a contract, we've solicited engineering services on a standby basis and we activate them per project and for emergency disaster response. So that's, we'll be bringing that to you if and when it's necessary. And that's pretty much it. I do just want to, as Roger goes through and shows the pictures, is that, just, you know, our folks were doing what they needed to do. Our Emergency Management Director, Operations Chief, Public Information Officer were probably in the EOC by midnight that Tuesday night, Wednesday morning. Actually, both our Operations Chief and Emergency Management Director had to help people out of their cars as they were coming in. And actually, the Operations Chief ran a few missions because we were getting calls in the middle of the event and nobody could get out, and he did that. We had, my staff was moving by first daylight, we were in the EOC by 7 o'clock, the EOC was up and operational and the ESFs, critical ESFs, were functioning and going about the county's business. So the, I appreciate my staff and the work that they did in putting together a lot of hours and dealing with a number of different situations. This was a huge event. I mean, Mr. Blodlock pointed out, our 100-year floods, 13 inches, we got 20, 20-plus. And again, that was on top of a saturated soil that really everything that hit the ground, by the time it was hitting the ground Tuesday, it was running off. There was just no, there was no capacity left in the wetlands and the ponds or anything else. So that's just our briefing on that. And we'll bring more to you as you will be dealing with this for a while. And it's our understanding that the state didn't get its, all the information that it needed to get to the governor until this morning. We had given our information to them, I think the other counties had, it took them a while to compile it. So I would expect a declaration within certainly the day and then we'll start working through the process. And you guys know it'll be a long process as we go through that with how we're positioned to deal with it.
That's your report, sir? All right, thank you very much. All right, now public forum.
Jack Bonney, 817 Dolphin Road. My person being here today is I'd like to put a formal objection into the procedures that were being used at the variance special meetings. What I'm objecting to is that the people coming before, speaking against the variance, were told to speak first prior to hearing the variance. This is contrary to what we've had in rules in the past. Previous chairmen, I've spoke before, have always let the presenter present and then objections are heard against that presentation. My example where this did not happen is the April 24 meeting where we had three of us there objecting to a variance. We were told to speak prior to the presentation. Two issues I want to make about that. One is that Mr. Bordelain's presentation was entirely different than the zoning board presentation that was made. In the zoning board presentation, there was a house specific and there was a lot size specific that was being done. His presentation waned into eventually saying there was no current plans, but he still wanted a 20-foot variance. But not to get into that, his presentation also showed a picture of a three-car garage, extremely huge home. If this information had been addressed after that presentation, we could have approached our variation objections differently. We had to object to things we hadn't seen. Secondly, and what was most upsetting to me, is Mr. Bordelain's presentation used my name three times in his presentation and he used it saying things that I had objected to and things I'd liked to see that were referring to variances and zoning changes that were done nine years earlier. Totally inappropriate, had nothing to do with this variation. And once again, I was not able to address his errors. Had we been able to speak after his presentation, I could have corrected his errors. I will correct those errors now. My first comment is that I never had variance comments about his project. The way it was done back then, gentlemen, is we had a zoning board, which is known as the planning board, and we had a board of adjustments. Board of adjustments heard the variances. I was not on the board of adjustments, I was on the zoning board. My comments from the zoning board were not against his variances. My comments from the zoning board was that when he had the rezoning done to put in his RV park on Avalon Boulevard, he immediately proceeded to bring in 112 loads of red clay packed into that very small piece of property. And some of you remember me coming in and speaking against that. He did not use silt fencing, he did not use any erosion control. It was not until we brought it to the attention of the county that this occurred. So my comments to Mr. Bordelain was not about his variances. But since he brought up variances, I will comment that he stated in his zoning meetings that he was very environmentally friendly. He gave us a nice presentation of what his park was going to look like. But in the reverse, he turned around, went before the board of adjustments and got seven different variances that were different than what he had told the zoning board, some of them including a zero setback on a swimming pool, eliminating the buffer protection for the street. And I won't go through those, but you can go back and look on the record, he did a lot of variations. And what that ended up doing, it highlighted a potential problem with our procedures. And I'm a procedure person, I like procedures. Procedures usually give you better results if you have good procedures. One of the things that was going on back then with the two boards is that a developer could come in-
Would you fix me in time? What time period are you speaking to?
This was, 2004 was the first zoning change, 2005 was-
Thank you.
-the variances, 2006, the second zoning change, and then two more sets of variances in 2006.
I wasn't on the board, so I wasn't able, I didn't know what you were talking about. That helps me.
I'm sorry, you didn't have that history. Some of these gentlemen did.
Okay.
Appreciate that. And so I hope you appreciate why I would rather have spoke afterwards, not before Mr. Bordelain got up to talk. But the two procedural changes that really got highlighted by this is developers would come to the zoning board and present wonderful plans. And then they'd go right back around to the board of adjustments and get variations to every one of those plans. And Becky Cato, to her credit, went through some changes, part of it budget-driven, but part of it was because of that, that combined the zoning board, which made board of adjustments and planning board into one board. So developers got one group of guys to listen to. Second thing that was highlighted by this is these 112 loads of red clay were brought in on a piece of property bordered on two sides by water. One side is a bayou, the other side was a canal. And the issue there is, and got highlighted, is there is no shoreline protection for canals. Now, once again, Becky, to her credit, came back and made canals for commercial development part of shoreline protection. So those two procedures got put in place, basically driven by this project that Mr. Bordelain had done. So my request is please let people speak after the presentations, not before.
Thank you very much. And if you just stand there a minute, I'll just share this. Based on the four years I've been on the board, I use the same format that I saw the other chairman using, which since I've been on the board, always have asked for those in objection to speak first. So that's the only reason I use that. That's what I saw everybody else doing, Jack, so.
It's the first time it's ever happened.
Well, no, it didn't, but that's okay. Yes, ma'am, name and address for the record, please.
Dita Davis, 6174 Mandy Lane, Milton, Florida. Down. Okay. I'm wondering why, Mr. Melvin, you're still chairman of this commission? It seems like a conflict since you and another commission are running for the same office. I don't think this has ever happened before, when we've had two running at the same time. And I think that the vice chairman should take over until after the election. I've been to many meetings and your attitude towards some of the constituents has been very rude. So I think you should recuse yourself and I think that the vice chair should take over until after election.
I thank you for your comments and you're certainly entitled to your opinion. And, but while we're talking about rudeness, I will go back to that. My, I was remiss in not making the announcement, and I will from now on. When we're working an agenda item, you're to limit your comments to the agenda item. And if you want to talk about other things, procedural things, that sort of thing, that's what the public forum is for. And when the chairman interrupts you and asks you to stay on point and you refuse to do that, that causes a back and forth. Now-
Now, I've apologized for that and I will apologize again. However, when we're having a meeting and we have an agenda item, you're going to have to stick to the agenda item and stick to your time. We're, we're liberal with our time. We say three minutes, but we don't really run a stopwatch on three minutes. You're free to discuss anything you want to during the public forum. But when we're working an agenda item, your comments have to be specifically to the item and not, that, those, those comments you're discussing had to do more with what, what Jack was saying, is to, to look at how you do it and maybe change the procedures. If you remember, the speaker wanted the, those, those items run through several other committees. And, and that's totally off the agenda item, okay? And so, anytime there's something that's off the agenda item, I'm going to ask you to hold those comments. And that speaker didn't feel like she had to. And it's unfortunate, but that, that's what that was about.
Well, I've heard you reprimand Commissioner Cole several times at the meetings and I don't think that's proper, but I think the vice chair should take over, sir.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
At a Loller, twenty-five thirty-two Cedar Crest Lane, Navara, Florida. Back to Jack and the zoning board procedures. And I, over the years, I've attended many zoning board meetings and sometimes the applicants don't say anything, sometimes there's no objection. But usually what is done, you read the agenda item, item and the chairman says, does the applicant have anything else to say? Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. So, the ones that have more to say, step up and add to the agenda item or clarify stuff. And then, the chairman usually asks, are there any objection to this before the board takes a vote? That's how I always saw the procedures done. As you all know, I'm kind of a stickler when it comes to public meeting procedures, public hearing procedures, ordinance enactment procedures and the like. On January 23rd, 2014, Commissioner Melvin, you interrupted me and tried to cut me off when I was speaking about the Sigma tax deed and Sandy Bottom's procedural fiasco. It wasn't the issue of taxation of the property, it was the improper issuance of the tax certificates and the clerical error made at the clerk of court's office. After that meeting, I believe Ms. Jones may recall, I kind of stormed the administrative office and I asked to speak to her. We did briefly speak about it. I believe Ms. Jones felt that I was speaking on topic and I don't know if she's had any opportunity, but I will remind all of you, because in the past, when some of you have been chairman of the board, people got cut off. It's not just Commissioner Melvin. In 2013, the anti-sushing laws were passed. The public has a right to speak and be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard on matters that come before this board. Public matters cannot be addressed by the public when the voices for or against are muzzled or silenced. And that's all I have to say on that. Now, the earlier item on the Navy easement that I spoke about, Randy Roy, on his way out, Ms. Jones, said, "All my concerns about the heights and other things, he thinks the Navy pretty well addressed." But my issue that I spoke a little about today, he said that he would get in, in touch with the Navy real estate and the legal folks or the attorney that drafts those easements. Because we've all seen it with the military, what happens when a base closes or pulls out and what happens to restrictive easements. We don't know what's going to happen to that airstrip. The county might get it or some corporation. So, he's going to check about seeing if, it, it isn't in there now, but if there would be a reverter or a transfer clause that if the Navy does close, whiting, those easements, protective easements would revert to Santa Rosa County. And at that time, Santa Rosa County can decide to sell them back to the property owner if they so choose, because I just don't think they should be wiped off the board. It's for the protection of the taxpayer. So, anyway, he's got my email address. If I hear anything, I will forward it to you and also the board of commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sauter.
Just for clarification, there's a federal law that says anytime that governmental land, federal governmental land transfers, they no longer need it, they close it, first opportunity has to be given to local government for the land itself. So, that, that was part of all the bright laws of, of all the years. So, local government has first shot.
Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Cantu, ninety-five seventy-seven Highway Ninety East, Milton. I'm going to read this and I apologize for not being able to look at you in the eye when I say it, but just understand, I, I sometimes lose my train of thought. Talking about time limits on citizen input. On a number of occasions, the board has limited the amount of time citizens are allowed to speak to present our view on topics before the board. This would seem to be an improper limitation on a citizen's right to free speech. To limit a citizen's time to present his or her view on any topic that's properly presented is improper. Any citizen should be allotted whatever time necessary to present information to the board. Also, the board's requirement that those who have the same views as a previous speaker not speak does not give a fair indication of how many people are for or against a particular view. So, when you say, if you have the same views as this person that's spoken, we don't need to hear from you, but you get no indication of how many people are actually agreeing with the speaker or disagree with the speaker. And again, so long as I'm presenting some information and I have something to say, you all should give me the time to, to speak, rather than saying you only have three minutes or five minutes or whatever it is. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anybody else have anything to come forward to the board?
Andrea McDermott, eight zero nine three, Sleepy Bay Boulevard. I'm going to change the subject a little bit, put on my association manager hat. I sent you an email last Tuesday about Sound Hammock subdivision and the flooding that they were experiencing there. I could only attach a few pictures at the time. I was uploading in a different way than I normally do because of the events and I was on the move also. I appreciate all the hard work everyone's done. I know it was an extraordinary event. The Sound Hammock flooding wasn't just related to the fact that we had 23 inches in 12 hours, which is unprecedented, and there's no way to plan ahead for that. We've had a problem in Sound Hammock with the drainage ditch that comes across 98 that drains the, the vacant land between Shannon Drive and Low Drive and it comes underneath. I brought some pictures from Mr. Blalock, if you don't, if you're able to put those up there. You'll see this plot, plan for the subdivision. The blue line is where Shannon and Low are approximately. It crosses underneath the Highway Ninety-eight and it comes down into this conservation area. It crosses Blue Jack next to seven, seven one four zero and seven one three three, Blue Jack, and then goes back into the conservation easement around our nature trail and out through the adjoining property into the sound. That's the normal flow path. The problem that we've had, been having, and we've had it on Brisa del Mar and we are also seeing it along 98, is that the flow isn't going as directed or as it should. I put in pink the arrows. Instead of heading west along the ditch, south ditch on 98, it's heading east. And then it's entering into the conservation area, in an area that's not ready for any water to come down. And it comes down and it floods those homes that I've also highlighted in pink. And along the edge of, of seven one three three and seven one four oh. Seven one four oh gets the worst of it, because it does come along the natural path that comes down through the conservation. Now, you have drainage ditches and culverts that are large enough to produce a lot of water and to put a lot of water through. I included some video to Mr. Blalock, but he couldn't upload those today, but they are available for you to see the videos. And what it does is it floods all of those because it's like a raging rapids. And this is next to seven one four zero. It's actually looking north, so that water is coming to you in this direction, in the southern direction. And this is seven one three three along the western edge there and that's looking south. So, these culverts are there, they're big enough, but the thing is, there's no ditch to support them. Right now, it just goes into the wetlands and into the woods. And so, as you can see, it's eroded seven one three three's property. And this is also looking out north from the edge of seven one three three and the raging rapids that he has coming next to his house. This is seven one four zero and this is the house that got the flooding. Now, I was there about nine-thirty to eleven o'clock in the morning and the water had gone down some. That's the other side of his house where he attempted at two o'clock in the morning to put sandbags out to try to keep the water out of his house and was unsuccessful. And then this is a neighboring home. As you go down, there's a few other neighboring homes where you can see that the water has gone through. This one is at the curve of Blue Jack. And you can see that there are no sandbags or any kind of protection for water that would flow into the road. So, all of his dirt now is in the subdivision and I'm having to pay someone to get it out. But you could also see in that picture that underneath his garage is starting to get undermined because of this heavy water flow that's coming through. And if you would go, I think we have some pictures of the ditch. Now, the problem isn't that Sound Hammock flooded. As you can see, oh, go back one, please. Sound Hammock, the roads were, were doing pretty well, except for right here where the house on the end, I'll call it C-7, I can't think of the exact address of it. But C-7 dumps and was dumping the sand. But the, our ditches were working, so any water that came into Sound Hammock was doing fine. The problem was the water from the north side of the road between Shannon and Low that was coming in through the culverts and then flooding down through behind these houses. Once it actually got through onto our roadways, our roadways were clear because our ditches were working. This is a picture of some of the roadway from looking up at Shannon and Low. As you can see, the, it's overflown there. But this hasn't just been a problem this week. This is something that we've been working on for a while. And I was before the board on the eleventh, I'm sorry, the 12th of November. And I mentioned that we were having problems and we had been working with the public works department with no success. And I was again asked to go talk to Avis and Avis asked me to put together a report, which I have also submitted to Roger Blalock today. And the report was given to him on the 13th of November. And it highlighted these very same areas. This is what was done to fix it. They put some rocks in. That's it. That doesn't help anything. And this is also our wetlands and our nature trail area and you can see the height of the water and the velocity of the water in these pictures. But I asked that something better be done to remove the water from the north side than just to put it through the houses of Sound Hammock subdivision. Something long-term. If we're having this problem when there's three to five inches in a 12-hour period, it's well within the 100-year flood plane that's been mentioned. Again, the, the circumstances last week kind of highlighted the problem, but it makes it easier for you to see in the video, because you'll see the rapids. And, you know, our big joke was we were going to rent inner tubes and pick them up at the sound and dump them back up at 98. But it's really not funny. And, and the people who are continually being flooded like seven one four zero Blue Jack would really appreciate the commissioners looking into doing something to fix this.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
At a Loller, twenty-five thirty-two Cedar Crest Lane, Navara, Florida. I heard Low Road being mentioned. Commissioner Lynchard, I sent you an email. Steven Furman, superintendent of schools, Becky Cato, it was a slug, about Low Road's intersection and the island and about me getting stuck. I whipped off 98, boom, and there I sat. And I sat. It was the wrong time of day. I couldn't back up, I couldn't go forward. I just had to sit because that road turns into a parking lot. Then finally it moved and I guess I kind of went around traffic. And I explained to where I was going. They said, "Oh, you shouldn't do that. The sheriff pulls people over and warns them if they do it again, he's going to give them a ticket." But anyway, I think there's room enough. I don't know if the island can be moved, but I think when I spoke to Becky about it, there isn't. She thought maybe an 80-foot easement. If you could put a lane and even I talked to, oh, the DOT, he was emailed also. He never got back to me, but he was going to look at the new road surfacing if there would be two turn lanes there. And that might be a good idea. So, that you've got one turn lane that's just devoted to school parking lot, because to get the parents in on the state roadway and the county roadway. Now, back to part two. The storm retention pond at that, I think it's a primary school on Low Road. When it was built, the storm pond had issues, issues with connection pipes. It had to be re, they weren't connected, so the pond never worked. So, then they connected those. And then I believe there was issues in the pond, pond with the underground piping having issues. So, maybe over time, when the water goes to the pond, stuff gets in, Walmart bags, you know, anything, kids' toys float over and stop up these pipes. Because this last rain event, which was a high rain event, did back up in that subdivision to the, on Low Road, north of 98, this high school. It was right, they back up to that, not high school, primary school. Those houses in the back didn't have water in their house, but it had flooding all in behind it. And I believe they contacted the county about to send somebody in and take a sneak peek down these pipes to see what's going on, because maybe that flows across and intersects with her drainage ditches too. I don't know. They did contact the county, but they were given the story that you got to contact the superintendent of schools, which I, uh, school district, which I believe they have, but nobody's gotten back to them. So, I think maybe your whole area right there might have some interconnecting issues. And let's not put concern or fight over who owns what retention pond, just maybe if the county's out there looking at her issue, just take a peek and see if the piping's working at the school retention pond. Or is it diverting the wrong way, ending up, and maybe it's ending up affecting her? You know, you don't know where this mess is not working, where is it, where's, can be fixed. Okay. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Jerry Cooley, sixty forty-nine, Arnie's Way. Kind of a, an extension of two weeks ago. Ms. Jones, I asked a question concerning, and I did it in email. I didn't get a response, so I'll ask it here today. Apparently, Mr. Cole had made a visit to the state attorney's office. Did you participate in any way when, when that was going on? I sent it to you in the email, so.
Mr. Cooley, I don't recall getting an email from you. I apologize if I missed it. What is your question? I'm sorry.
It's my understanding Mr. Cole was at the state attorney's office regarding a personal matter and I was one- matter, and I was wondering if you had participated in that.
Not familiar with that.
Okay, all right. Last week, we were having a discussion, and Mr. Cole, I think, I'll call it threw out a challenge. He said, if I could do any better than the investigative organizations that looked at him, that I should step up. Well, I'll tell you, I'm not an investigative organization, but what I am is a citizen that believes in public records. And I'm a citizen who will step out and ask for those public records. So there's a 1,700-page report that covers everything that you are looked at for. And that report brings some questions, maybe some comments. Two weeks ago, we were discussing an umbrella and $50,000. Now, your claim is that the umbrella was under 100, but $50,000 that you received from that organization, you didn't show that as a gift either. So one would assume that you had to show that as income, and I don't know if you did or not. But was it income? Was it a gift? No comment? Okay, well, that's fine. I think the folks would be very interested to know something else. And I will tell you, in all the things that I've seen in my time and looking at stuff, this honestly is probably the thing that disgusted me the most about what is in this 1,700-page report. Mr. Cole is the owner of Bob Cole Imports, and he has listed as his wife Sheila Cole as an employee. But interestingly enough, Sheila Cole was fired from Bob Cole Imports, as far as the paperwork is concerned. And then Bob Cole signed off on unemployment compensation, and Sheila Cole, as a member of Bob Cole Imports, actually drew unemployment compensation. Now, there weren't any investigative organizations that wanted to push this as far as it should have gone, but I'll just tell you that it is quite shocking to me that a business owner, a county commissioner, that you have a wife that drew unemployment compensation. And I just, you know, that's just one of many things in here. And since you threw down the challenge, I intend on going over them week after week, and we'll work our way through all 1,700 pages. Thank you.
Does anybody have anything else to come forward to the board? Jack, come on.
Jack Bonney, 817 Dolphin Road. I've been sitting here thinking, we've heard about the flood and the 20-plus inches, it's an unusual situation. And I was thinking about what Ms. Davis just said, which is also an unusual situation. I can't recall ever having two commissioners running against each other, sitting on the board at the same time. I'm not sure it was well thought out ahead of time when you guys voted on who'd be chairman. I'm not going to ask you, Mr. Melvin, to step down, because I know what that answer would be. It turns out this not, I don't think it's your decision. I think it's the decision of the board. As I understand it, the chairman serves at the pleasure of the board. And I think, in my opinion, thinking about what she just said, from a procedural standpoint, with an election coming up, we shouldn't have two commissioners sitting on the board, with one of them being a chairman and one of them not. I think, Hunter, you need to look at if there's past precedent as to what needs to be done, and maybe Angie, this falls into your territory. But I don't think it's quite proper that somebody could be in a chairman position and do the role you do. And you're doing your job, okay? I'm not saying you're doing it wrong. I'm just saying you're doing it. And by imposition of doing it, you do have an unfair advantage.
Well, the chairman's job is to make sure that the meetings start on time, and they're conducted in a timely manner, and that the comments stay on point, and just generally do that. And I don't think I have been unfair to any of the commissioners when they wanted time to speak about something that was on point. So I appreciate your thoughts. I appreciate your comments.
I'm not addressing that, Commissioner Melvin. I'm addressing the fact that as chairman, your name gets in the paper more. Your name is on documents, signing for budgets, you know. The chairman position is more than just keeping people on point, and I appreciate your comment. But I do think it's-
And I appreciate yours, and I disagree with your position. Thank you, sir. Does anybody have anything else to bring forward to the board? We are adjourned.